And I would like to ask Commissioner Bud if you can please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next order of business is the minutes. Any commissioner have comments on the minutes? Not hearing any. Could I entertain a motion for acceptance of the minutes?
Chairman, I move that we accept the January 4th, 2022 minutes as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any. John, your vote please.
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Dawn, are you on yet?
I am, yes.
Okay, and your vote?
Yes.
Chairman Dan, Chairman Dan, Mr. Sampson does not have a vote since we have a full committee.
Good reminder. Thank you very much. But all were in favor of the motion passed, so now this is accepted as presented. Next item on the agenda is Magnolia, and I move to Director Harrington for this.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission members. For the record, my name is Janine Harrington, the Director of Planning for the Town of La Plata. So the project before you is Magnolia Gardens. The applicant owner is YBN Enterprises LLC, and the engineer authorized agent is Stacy Legana with Lorenzi Dodd and Gannell Incorporated. The project is located at Tax Map 33, Block 3, Parcel 528. The existing zoning is the Central Business Transition District. The existing use is vacant. The property is approximately 3.75 acres. To the north, you have CBT, which is a public parking facility or the park and ride facility. To the south is Central Business Transition, which is a vacant but built assisted living facility. To the east is TDX for the Heritage Green subdivision, and to the west is R21 residential zoning. The applicant submitted an application for a major site plan on September 23rd, 2021, for the review and approval of a 72-unit apartment building and parking waiver. The proposed development, as I mentioned, consists of the 72 apartment units with a total of four buildings and a clubhouse. The property is located along Washington Avenue at the intersection of Heritage Green Parkway, and a new pump station will be required onsite to accommodate the increase in wastewater that connects to the Mary Ball Central Pump Station. The buildings have been oriented to create a campus pattern with frontage along Washington Avenue, and the clubhouse is in the center, making a very nice focal point. Play areas and parklets are provided in addition to the clubhouse to meet our open space requirement. I now go through the criteria for approval and findings. So under the Code of the Town of La Plata, Chapter 108 Resource Protection Standards, the proposed development is in compliance with our Resource Protection Regulations. Give me one second. So under our new Chapter 108, we have stream resource protection standards, and there are no streams present on the site. Wetlands, again, are not present on the site. There are no steep slopes or highly erodible soils present. This property does not have any FIDS habitat present. There is no flood plain located within the property. And for forest conservation, the property is not exempt from the regulations and is proposing off-site forest conservation at a preservation rate of 2:1 ratio within the town's watersheds. The forest delineation revealed there were no priority retention species. For the forest conservation, the existing forest cover was 3.23 acres. Forest clearing mitigation permitted without mitigation was 2.04 acres. They are not retaining any forest conservation easements onsite due to the size of the property, and will be retaining four acres at the 2:1 ratio at an off-site easement as approved under the town's code. Under Chapter 167 Stormwater Management, the proposed development is in compliance with the Stormwater Management Regulations. They have Step 2 Site Development Plans approved, and they will be submitting for their Step 3 approval. Water quality treatment will be provided through the use of microbioretention facilities, rain gardens, and underground storage facilities with sand filters. Under Chapter 170 Streets and Sidewalks, the proposed development is in compliance with our Streets and Sidewalks Regulation. The site will utilize one access point onto Washington Avenue with a second exit proposed onto Heritage Green Parkway. The parking lot has been designed to provide adequate circulation throughout the site. Proposed five-foot sidewalks onsite connect to the overall sidewalk network, allowing for pedestrian accessibility for the future of downtown Washington Avenue. Rams have also been provided at crosswalks to ensure that they are in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And street trees are being provided. However, staff has noted that due to an existing 15-foot sewer easement, the trees have been set back slightly than what we would normally see, as trees cannot be planted over easements due to maintenance issues. Under Chapter 186 Waters and Sewers, the proposed development is in compliance with the water and sewer regulations, and they are providing the design and function for the pump station and any water and sewer lines in accordance with the town code. Under Chapter 191-30 Commercial Zoning Regulations, I provided a table showing the regulations that are required versus what is being proposed in accordance with the CBT regulations. So for minimum lot area, there's none that is required. They have approximately 163,350 square feet. For the minimum lot width, it's 80 feet, and they have 436 feet. Minimum lot coverage is none. They have 106,297 square feet proposed. Maximum height is 50 feet, and they are proposing 36.4 feet. Front setback is 10, side setback is 15, and rear setback is 20, and they are meeting all of those requirements. For open space, they are required to provide 15% under the subdivision chapter, which is 24,502.5 square feet, and they are providing approximately 15% with 24,650.604 square feet. And they do not have any green space requirements due to the nature of the use. They are, Chapter 191-41 Lighting Standards, the proposed development is in compliance with the lighting regulations. This has been reviewed by SMECO, and they did not offer any objections to the lighting plan. They have provided adequate lighting that will not negatively impact any adjacent properties. There will be two LED 100-line sconce lights attached to the rear buildings, and 21 pure-form parking lot lights proposed. All the lights will be directed down with a neutral white light to avoid light pollution. Under Chapter 191-44 Parking Requirements, the proposed development is not in compliance with the multifamily dwelling unit parking regulations, and they are requesting a parking waiver in accordance with Section 191-44.F. Under the town code, Use Number 5 Multifamily Dwelling would require 180 parking spaces with 5 ADA, and they are providing 136 plus 7 ADA parking spaces with the two required loading spaces. Under the parking waiver explanation, the applicant has submitted a lengthy memo that is very good at explaining where they came up with their data, but I provided a small summary in my staff report. The applicant is requesting a parking waiver in accordance with the town code and 2020 Comprehensive Plan. The applicant has stated that the site will have 18 one-bedroom units, 32-bedroom units, and 24 three-bedroom units for a total of 150 bedrooms. The town code requires 2.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit, and they are requesting a ratio of 1.99 parking spaces per dwelling unit based on the ITE Parking Generation Manual requirement of 1.7 parking spaces per dwelling unit. Staff finds that the request is reasonable and recommends approval of the parking waiver for the site. Under Section 191-48 Landscaping, the site is in compliance with the perimeter and interior regulations as shown in the table below. So for the interior, they are required to provide 10%. They are providing 10.3%, and they are meeting the feet and number of planting requirements for the perimeter landscaping along right-of-way, which is Washington Avenue, right-of-way, which is Heritage Green Parkway, perimeter parking to the rear, and the perimeter parking lot, which is next to an adjacent parking lot or the public park and ride. Under the Comprehensive Master Plan for 2020, the site is in conformance with the land use element, which labels the site as a commercial property. The maximum street furniture has also been achieved within this project. Under Transportation Element, Goal Number 16, to continue to make La Plata very walkable, the site has proposed five-foot sidewalks onsite and connecting along Washington Avenue. This is a great effort in making sure that we are able to continue bringing sidewalks down Washington Avenue, which has been a goal of the county and the town. Under Transportation Element, Goal Number 17, better manage the supply of existing parking and limit new off-street parking. The applicant, as we mentioned before, is providing a total, including with the ADA parking spaces, 143 spaces, to accommodate the uses onsite with a parking waiver. According to the ITE manual, the proposed parking will adequately serve the neighborhood while limiting new off-street parking. Staff would also like to note that we've been seeing a lot of parking waivers and joint parking requests, and in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted after we made the changes to the zoning code in 2018 regarding parking, I do feel that we should look at our parking regulations and consider adopting the ITE Parking Manual as a guide for our future development. For Goal Number 24, encourage a range of housing density type, cost, and size in new subdivisions to welcome a diverse population. Currently, the town is comprised of mainly single-family dwellings and townhome units. Multifamily dwellings will provide an alternative for residents and increase the housing diversity on the market with an affordable option. So under staff recommendation, we are recommending approval of the major site plan and parking waiver request in accordance with the Code of the Town of La Plata and the 2020 Comprehensive Plan with the following condition. In accordance with the discussion with the Design Review Board on January 12th of 2022, the applicant should provide a fence along the rear property boundary, which abuts the railroad right-of-way. The applicant has stated previously that they wanted to propose thorny bushes in lieu of a fence. However, the Design Review Board and staff are both in agreement that a fence would be more appropriate in that area. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me, and we do have the applicant online if you have any questions of them.
I would like the applicant to speak. Speak for the applicant. Do you have anything to add?
Hi, Mike. This is Stacy Legana with Lorenzi Dodd at Gannell. I don't have anything to add at this time. I don't know if the actual... Braxton, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Okay. Just wanted to give you the opportunity to add anything if you'd like.
There's nothing else I'd like to add either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I go to the commissioners. Any comments or questions for Janine? And I actually will start with one. Janine, did I hear you say the property is a zone commercial?
Yes, we did make that change previously last year. So it was changed to the Central Business Transition Zone.
Would this be residential or a business?
So multifamily is a residential use, but it is permitted within the Central Business Transition District.
Oh, gotcha. Residential use of... Okay. Other questions, comments from the commissioners?
Evelyn, you want to go?
Evelyn, your comment?
Tracy, did you have something?
I did, but I can... Okay, so my question is, so they mentioned that they wanted to... That the preference would be to put thorny bushes opposed to a fence. Has that been decided upon? Or is that just something that's, you know, up in the air? That's just a question.
So I'll ask if Braxton has anything to add to that. I know the staff's perspective and the Design Review Board perspective is that we would like to see a fence provided. Do you have any comments on that, Braxton?
Yeah, so we're 100% willing to, you know, put a fence there if you guys want us to do that. Our only consideration was, we've built numerous properties along railroad tracks before, and we haven't engaged a specialist in this project, but previously, they have told us that it's better to have a thorny bush as a deterrent than a fence, because if someone does happen to get stuck on the railroad tracks, they're still able to get back across and to safety as opposed to having a fence that would not allow that. That was our only reason for recommending or for requesting that we could put thorny bushes there instead of a fence. But it has not been decided upon, and we will take whatever you guys want us to do and go with that.
Except for clarification, I understood from Janine correctly that the design review board had already respected the fence in particular.
The Design Review Board did. We took this to them in January as a pre-discussion item. It wasn't an official submission, and it was the consensus of the Design Review Board that a fence would be more appropriate. We do understand, but we've had several neighborhoods that are along the railroad tracks, and the residents have been extremely grateful for the fact that there is a fence in between them and the railroad tracks.
Thank you. Counselwoman Evelyn, Brian Ward, do you have a comment or question?
Thank you, Chairman Dan. I do, and I'm going to play devil's advocate. I've had several concerns brought to me with regards to this project, and I just want to be transparent and kind of clear some of the concerns up. But the first question, I think, is probably a crazy question, but I'm looking at the presentation from June 10th, 2019, and the name was La Plata Gardens. Are we talking about the same project?
Yes, ma'am. So they did decide on the name change later last year.
Okay. And so the other concern is...
That's fair stuff for me, too. We've been here.
Okay. And so the other concern that I have is that some of the residents do not feel that we've been very straightforward with what the nature of this project is going to be. If the initial presentation on June 2010th, 2019, is the initial presentation, I can see that it was always the intent to have affordable housing in there, and it makes perfect sense. I don't believe that we should have a town where people can work and serve but can't live. So I do appreciate the idea. Has there ever been a decision made in opposition to this? Was it initially presented as one thing, and did it change to affordable housing altogether? Or was it always the intent to be what we see tonight, that, what is it, affordable housing units? Has that always been the plan from 2019 to now, and is that still the plan to have the units as listed?
That is certainly my understanding. Braxton, do you want to...
Yeah, I can take this. So, yeah, we are a nonprofit that operates. We have over 100 different properties throughout Maryland, DC, Virginia, and so we do operate affordable housing. We do have experience building market-rate housing as well, but our bread and butter is we do affordable housing. And yes, this has been affordable housing since the conception of it. That's where our funding comes from and is what it's based on. And included in that, in all of our affordable housing projects, we have a property management team that is there full-time. We also offer, we have a division of our company called Community Impact Strategies, and they offer different services to residents such as job trainings, healthcare. So this project has always been an affordable project, and that is, yeah, that's our mission as a company. And so, yeah, we have plenty of experience managing these types of projects.
Okay, no worries. And you answered my second question was, did you have a full-time property management source on the property? And you answered that, and I appreciate it. Can you tell me again the breakdown of the units? How many units are market rate? How many units? I think you said something about ADA and senior and affordable housing. Can you give me the breakdown?
I can. I have to ask. Luke, he's, Luke is my colleague, and he's running our finance side. Luke, are you on the call?
Yeah, I am. Hi, everyone. My name's Luke Patton, and I'm a real estate development manager with Enterprise Community Development. And the breakdown is that of the 72 units, seven of them are unrestricted market rate units, and the rest of the units are affordable units.
So are affordable units and market rate units the same? Because I just heard market rates, and I did hear ADA, and I did hear, I thought I read senior residence. And so that does not sound consistent with what I heard previously.
So for this project, this project will have a single owner, and it is funded with low-income housing tax credits, which are allocated to the project by the state of Maryland. They're federal tax credits, but they come through the state of Maryland. And within the total 72 units, for these types of affordable projects, the state allows you as the developer to propose for a given unit, you know, a certain income restriction level or no income restriction. So in this particular case, for seven of the units, seven of the 72, they are technically market rate units that sit within a sort of overall affordable project. But for those seven units, you could make $1 million and live in one of those units. We don't expect millionaires to live in those units, but technically, you know, you can make any income whatsoever and occupy one of those seven units. For the other 65 units, there, you need to make under a certain income to be qualified to live in those units, and those units, you know, have limits on how high we can set the rent, which are sort of dictated by the federal government.
Okay, so I did find my...
And so that's what makes those affordable.
I apologize. I did find the document that I was looking at. Four buildings with 72 units, 18 one-bedroom units, 32 bedrooms, and 24 three-bedrooms. 12 other units would be for house persons with disabilities. So that disabilities is regardless of income? So that's not, that's an addition to the fact that it's affordable housing or market rate housing? 12 of any of those of the entire units would be for disabilities. 60 units would serve persons earning 60% of area median income, and 12 units will not be income restricted. This has always been your plan? This has always been what you proposed, the way I just read it?
Yes, this is always... Oh, go ahead, Luke.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Braxton.
Yeah, so when we submitted our application for the, for funding of the low-income housing tax credits, this was the plan always. This has always been the makeup of the units, and has always been the plan that we've unfolded.
So I guess I'm, maybe I don't know math, but 12 units for disabilities is 60 units plus another 12 units will not be income restricted. That's not 72. That's 84. Am I missing something?
12 of the 72.
Okay, so it doesn't, so it doesn't say that. So I'm glad you clarified, because it looks like, you know, we're hearing one thing and seeing something different. So I just want to clarify so it doesn't look like we are expecting one development and we're going to get something totally different. So I just want to be clear, and I want you to be clear, so that any residents who have questions or concerns can be on the same page. I have no issues with affordable housing. I completely support it, because I don't believe that people should live and serve here, I mean, work and serve here and can't live here. So I'm okay with it, but I want to make sure that you are presenting to us what it is that you intend to do, so residents don't come back on me as a planning commissioner or as a council member and say, "You approved that, and this is now what you approved." And so I want to be clear.
Yeah, we definitely appreciate that and want to provide clarification. So yes, there will be 72 total units, and Luke explained the income breakdown of those. However, of those 72 units, 12 will be, they're ADA or UFAST, which is ADA compliant, to provide for, and that breakup, I'm not sure how that's spread throughout the property, but there will not be any additional units beyond 72. 12 of those 72 will be ADA and UFAST compliant.
And you have 60 units will serve persons earning 60% below the area median, but then you have another line that says 12 units will not be income restricted. That's 84 units. So should that not be 60 units will serve persons earning below 60% of the area median income? Because right now, the math is not going to add up. So I just want to be clear on the breakdown, and if it's 12 units ADA, 12 units will not be income restricted, then that should subtract from the 60 units in my mind. I'm not the sharpest knife in the block, but that math is just not working out for me.
Yeah, and this is Luke. I can maybe jump in here. So one thing that should be noted here, I can tell you with 100% certainty that the income breakdown that I mentioned earlier, and I'll repeat it again here, and we're happy to, you know, I think we've likely shared the income breakdown with the town, but I'm happy to resend it in case it'd be helpful to have
No, sir.
Janine distributed it. But the income breakdown, yeah, the way it stands and the way that it is basically locked into place at this point is 65 of the 72 total units have some form of income restriction and are therefore, quote unquote, affordable housing units, and seven of the 72 units have no income restriction. They are unrestricted market rate units. And if in June 2019, that number at that point in time was 12 instead of 7, as it stands today, likely what happened there is, in that iteration, we submitted to the state of Maryland for the tax credits that are referred to before. These are called low-income housing tax credits. They're very competitive. Typically, about one out of every four projects that is submitted to the state gets funded, and the other three of the four do not. So we were able to secure those tax credits, but what happens when, because they are competitive, you need to kind of mold your project to some degree to the state's preferences, and sometimes that gets into the income restrictions or lack thereof. And so...
I'm not just saying about the income restrictions. You're answering a question that I'm not asking. I'm just trying to get the breakdown, because 12, 12, and 60, that's 84.
Oh.
Yeah.
Counselwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, I'm pretty sure I understand where the confusion is coming. So the 72 units, 65 are going to be the affordable restricted income units. Seven of those will be market rate. Now, between those two categories, there will be 12 units that will also be ADA compliant. So they may be market rate, they may be low-income restricted, but the 12 is being encompassed within that overall spread out.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Because that was, the math just wasn't adding up, and I know I can add up to 10 at least. So...
Yeah, I think that there's overlap between the accessible units and the market rate with the affordable.
Okay.
That is, that is correct. Yes. Thank you, Janine.
All right. That's it for me.
Is Mike still on the call?
Don't see him.
All right, looks like... All right, looks like.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Commissioner Sampson, do you have questions or comments?
Yes, I had two questions. One was for my clarity. Across the street from the proposed site is the Sage Point Assisted Living Facility. And you have those houses over there. So the first part of this question was, I thought I heard somewhere during the original presentation that that site was empty. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I believe that it is going to settlement. There's a, something going on with that property for it to be sold for a similar use. I don't have all of the details, but I do know that it is planning to be occupied with that similar assisted living facility. It just won't be owned and operated by Sage Point.
Okay. And the second part to that question is, the building, the yellow building that's adjacent to the property, what is the purpose of that building there?
That is.
It's still on the map.
That is the assisted living facility.
So what's the one across the street then? Because if you go across the street, there's a subdivision and it says Sage Point Assisted Living. And right there is like, I guess we call it one-story villas or whatever.
Yes. So that is owned and maintained. Yeah, it is senior housing, but it is maintained by Sage Point. So it gives the community a little bit of freedom and ability to live, but they do have services available if they need it.
Okay. And so then my only other question then is, once this site is put up, has there been any projection or study on how the traffic and the parking will impact the subdivision across the street, the commuter lot? And, and just regular through traffic during the day? That's my only other question.
So I know that that was looked at. I'm not sure if Braxton has anything specific to add on that. We did send the plans out for review. We have our internal staff review and our, since this is a county road, they also have to get review and approval from the county on their entrance permit. So I'm not sure, Braxton, if you have an update on the counties.
I don't have an update on the county yet. Maybe Stacy Legana can speak more to that, but we have retained a traffic consultant to advise us through the process as well. And I'm not sure if Stacy Legana has anything else to add.
We're going to be required to get an access permit from Charles County, since this is a Charles County road. So they will be reviewing our traffic study that we will have a traffic consultant do and submit. And any impacts that we have will be required to mitigate. And since this is a Charles County roadway, they will implement any of the mitigation measures for any of our traffic impacts.
Anything else, Mr. Sampson?
No, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Mudd, you have questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. Earlier, Director Harrington indicated the continued array of parking waiver requests. And I totally agree with her point of view that it's probably time now for the town to readdress the parking standards that it currently provides by. I'm all for new and improved regulations. Obviously, the regulations that exist today were put there for a purpose and at the time were thought to be appropriate. If that has changed over time, then I think from strictly a house cleaning standpoint, with all the other things that you're busy with, would be nice to amend the ordinance so you're not continually having to grant parking waivers, which I think has a certain liability to it over time. So that's just a suggestion and I'm certainly in favor of that. In terms of the fence along the railroad track, rather than being indecisive about it, I would, part of the future motion to approve this would make it a condition of approval that a fence of appropriate style and type be installed along the railroad track. And it's not so much trains. I think in the future, that place could turn into a rail trail. And that's where again, a fence might be advantageous from a privacy standpoint, separating, you know, several uses. The last question I have, and I guess this is really for Stacy, on the boundary of the property that abuts the park and ride, any thought given to enhancing or increasing the landscaping along that perimeter? Again, just to provide better screening, a better separation between the two competing uses?
Sure. We're actually, we've proposed an eight-foot landscape buffer over there. So I really think that, that the landscaping that we proposed in conjunction with what's actually already there will provide a pretty good buffer between the two uses.
All right, that sounds good. I think that's it. I'd be curious to see what the results of the traffic study are going to be. Now, I realize that really is in the bailiwick of Charles County government and not so much the town, but at the same time, it may be advantageous for the town to see the results of that, just so there's an assurance level that the project will not adversely impact intersections and traffic movements.
I think we'd be happy to provide the study to staff if they, so they can review it. That's not a problem.
All right, that sounds real good. Mr. Chairman, that's all the comments I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Commissioner members? Okay, I have one. This is a point of clarity to Janine or the applicants. You made reference in your staff report that we approved the parking waivers for previous projects. If I recall, those previous projects made it relatively easy to approve because there was parking sharing going on. I don't think there's parking sharing going on here. Did you clarify my understanding of that?
Yes, absolutely. So 109 Charles Street, when they came before you in December, they were subject to a joint parking agreement that was done through the original Baldist Retail Center development. So even though they were subject to a joint parking agreement, if you look at the total parking throughout both properties, they're still short on parking. So that was why we had to do a parking waiver, because they couldn't meet the minimum for both, for all combined uses to begin with. But they do have shared parking and there is an agreement that if someone wants to park down in the overflow parking lot, they can do so. Rosewick was an example of a, the apartment building. They do not have a shared parking agreement. They do not have a joint parking agreement. And the applicant had stated that the parking for the commercial and retail spaces were not to be utilized by the apartment use. They do have the potential to enter into a joint parking agreement or a shared parking agreement into the future, if that's what they so desire to do. But that was not what we approved. We approved the apartments as a standalone use with a parking waiver. This property, while there is no parking lots adjacent to, that they could use for their actual residential parking, it is directly next door to a park and ride facility with a public transportation element for it. That is one of the reasons why they chose this property, to be able to accommodate affordable living situations. There are people that may not have vehicles, looking for housing options and they have direct access to public transportation.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments from all of the commissioners? Any further comment from the applicant? Not hearing any, I'd like to entertain a motion. Can one of the commissioners please make a motion?
Chairman Gann.
Yes, Evelyn.
This is Commissioner Bryant Ward. I move to approve the major site plan and parking waiver in accordance with the code of the town of La Plata and the 2020 Comprehensive Plan with the conditions stated under the staff recommendations from the board, from the design review board to add a fence and not the thorny bushes.
Thank you for that motion. It's first second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, I'd like to go to the vote. I would start with Tracy. Yes or no?
Yes.
Dawn, yes or no?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And I also say, yes, the motion is passed anonymously. Thank you. And Stacy and your team, thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second, our second item on the agenda is the Hub project. And Jean, I have a question for you. The last time I looked at this preparation, the day before yesterday, I did not see a staff report, so I'm not sure the plan here, this is going to be a presentational project.
Correct. So I am going to turn it directly over to Sue Greer, who is representing applicant on this. This is purely just an introduction for the planning commission, since this is coming before you. And with that, I will, I will turn it over to Sue.
Chairman Gann, thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your question, because that was a perfect segue into our briefing tonight. We are before you, as many of you who have been around know that the Hub is a project that is a proposed annexation that has been in planning stages for decades. And it is a project that is mixed use that will be built out over decades. And it is built on the vision of Jay Hellman, who had the vision to see decades ago, the importance of technology, how it would impact our living, well before COVID. In fact, I'm going to date myself because I thought about when he had the vision to understand where technology was going and how important it was to track where these fiber lines would be built to create a community built on virtual adjacency. And now I'm going to know how old, how you all are, if you know what I'm talking about, because I thought to myself that it was probably about around the time that I had a job where I was on call and I was so excited because to be on call, I had to carry a briefcase slung over my shoulder that had a phone in it. And I wanted to walk around with it to show everyone my technology. And here we are, many years later, with phones that hold entire computers. But that's just a little segue and thank you for indulging me in that moment of reflection. Along with Jay Hellman, the great partnership is not just his vision, but the Tower Companies, which has a national reputation for sustainable development that's been recognized by the U.S. Green Building Council and the U.S. Department of Environment and Energy. But tonight, I really don't want to get into the details. We wanted to just come before the planning commission tonight because at your next meeting, you're going to have a public hearing on the annexation petition. We're finally at that stage of the process. And we wanted to orient or reorient the planning commission to the project, provide a very high-level, short overview. And so that in the event that any of the planning commission members had questions, had information that they wanted to ensure that we focused on in the public hearing at your next meeting, that you could forward those to us through Ms. Harrington and we would be sure to address those during the public hearing. So with that, what I'd like to do with me on the call, we only, we have two members of our team tonight. Bill Murray, who is our project manager. And if any of you know Bill, he lives in the town of La Plata. He has been designing, construction, planning, engineering in Southern Maryland for about 40 years. And our master planner, Seth Harry of Seth Harry and Associates, who has both a national and international reputation. So with that, in order to be cognizant of your schedules and because I promised that it would be brief, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Seth Harry to give you an overview of the project in anticipation of a more detailed presentation at our, at your, at the public hearing. Seth, are you, are you on?
I believe I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And can you see, can you see that?
We can.
Okay, perfect. So this is a high-level overview of what we will be presenting next month. Basically, it's, it's the master development agreement document. We've detailed a number of items contained within it in previous presentations and we will do so again in next month's presentation. But this is based on the format and layout for the master site development plan submittal. And we start out with the master site development plan narrative, which lays out many of the principles by which the original plan was developed. And then the revised plan based on changes in market conditions as a result of COVID. And talks about the principles and the basic outline characteristics that we described previously, including compact design and their connectedness, mixed use, regional precedence, regional planning precedence, housing choice of local employment, transit supportive, potential school site phasing, proposed natural and recreational amenities. And, and many of the other things that we described in more detail previously. This is the existing conditions and site context map. It shows here in the upper right-hand corner, the vicinity map. The property is located between Route 225 to the south and Mitchell Road to the west. It's bordered by the College of Southern Maryland, the Mount Carmel, the Mount Carmel monastery. And the site is traversed by Jenny Runn. And there's some images here showing some of the topography and natural features of the site. The site is, its current land use is agricultural. And this is an image of the connecting road to the south to Route 225, the existing conditions there. This is the master site development plan, which is essentially a bubble plan. We have a detailed conceptual layout ghosted in. Below that, you can see the campus of College of Southern Maryland to the, in the upper left-hand corner. We have the proposed school site for a small private or charter school site. It's, the, the topography does not lend itself to a county spec school. It would require a significant grading. There's essentially three neighborhoods, neighborhood to the north, a neighborhood in the middle of the site and the neighborhood on the south fronting Route 225. The two neighborhoods to the north are bisected by a central spine road. One change and one correction that needs to be made in this document, which will be made in time for our following presentation is, we had originally numbered the neighborhoods from north to south, neighborhood one, neighborhood two, neighborhood three. But when we did the detailed statistical analysis, we actually switched that to do it on the basis of the phasing. So this is now neighborhood one, neighborhood two and neighborhood three. That's the, the, the naming sequence in the program matrix. And we'll have that corrected next month. So neighborhood one is actually neighborhood three in the plan. Neighborhood two is the same and neighborhood three is, will now be neighborhood one. So this shows a range of potential units based in the acreage on those each individual neighborhood parcels. And the minimum and maximum projected commercial or non-residential uses. The next chart talks about the neighborhood by acreage, both net and gross and the relative density per acre for each of those neighborhoods. And again, neighborhood three, neighborhood one is actually three and neighborhood three is actually neighborhood one. And then this is the required mix of uses as a percentage of the total site area by the TDX zoning, which we intend to submit under. So these are minimums and this shows what we have of each of these different categories, single-family attached, single-family detached, multifamily, commercial, public and semi-public and open space. So we meet all. So we meet or exceed all of the minimum percentages of development land area, and 50% of the total site area is allocated open space. There's minimum of 25% required. We actually, if you add these up, they come in a little bit over 100%. And the reason for that is because we have mixed-use buildings on the site. So some of the, the TDX only measures the required mixes uses based on site coverage. So some of these uses are duplicated in terms of the coverage, because we have commercial and retail on the ground floor, some of the multifamily and some of the office units. This is the Master Site Development Plan amenity framework. And you can see here that, again, you treat the, the streets and thoroughfares as part of the public space, and they're detailed and designed to support and encourage walking and, and various modes of transit. Each of the neighborhoods have small neighborhood parks. This is a larger, a community-scale park here on the northern end of the site, and the connector road to the campus of Southern Maryland. And then you can see, again, the large green here fronting on Route 20, 225, and neighborhood parks in our, in our first neighborhood, neighborhood one. And again, central parks and green spaces throughout each of the neighborhoods. And these are images representing similar amenities and other projects that we've done and/or intend to do here. And then finally, this is our open space plan, which shows the large percentage of open space, approximately 50% of the total site area, as well as additional civic space within the neighborhoods themselves. And this is the illustrative exhibit, which begins to suggest, at a more detailed level of resolution, some of the, the planning that's already been done in terms of looking at that, and that we use as the basis for calculating our, our unit mix and yield for the project overall. And, and some of these images, again, speak to the character of some of the spaces, where you're still actively marketing the site for a large, remote work campus site. But we're also made changes to accommodate more live-from, work-from-home opportunities, a mix of small-scale neighborhood-serving retail, walkable streets and parks, local and community gardens, and, and graphic representation of some of the neighborhood architecture that we intend to build, and we'll discuss in more detail at the next month's meeting. That's it.
So in deference to the public, because it will be the public hearing, we didn't want to, to drill down too deep or drag you through the nitty-gritty, because we wanted to ensure that the, the public hears that detail. And we didn't want to put you through the detail twice. But again, wanted to focus your attention on the project. And anxious, again, if you have any comments, if you have any questions, if after tonight, you want to follow up through Janine and say, you know, please make sure the developer addresses this issue during their presentation, we are happy to receive that type of input and feedback so that we can ensure that you all have the best and most accurate information before you when you make, ultimately make your decision. And also so that the public has that information as well.
Thank you very much, Sue. And Jeanine, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
I'm not hearing any.
Oh, hold on. It was John.
Yeah, just a quick concern in the future as far as road access and environmental impacts. And I guess the question is, is there a plan to cross Jenny Run to connect the entirety of the project?
Would you like to address that, Mr. Murray, or, or Mr. Harry? Which would, who would like to take that question?
I can probably take that one. John, there is a line road coming through the property. It will connect Quellwood to 301 someday. This is in both the transportation element of the county and in the town's transportation element. We've completely designed that and engineered it to the tune of about a million bucks so far. And we actually have the Army Corps Engineer permits in hand, and EMD permits for those stream crossings. Jenny's Run itself, connecting over to the college, okay? We have not obtained permits for that yet. We have two options, making that connection. It can be a limited-use pedestrian or bike, or we'd prefer to have a vehicle access across there, because we talked to, some of the residents live on Mitchell Road, and there's a lot of screeching tires and things happening there. So they thought this would be some relief for them, if we could connect. But no, we have not designed that road yet, John, that particular road. But we have designed the four-lane spine road coming through and have it permitted.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
It wasn't easy to do, John. We did bug studies and everything, as you know.
I can imagine. And I can only assume Jenny Run would be a more ticklish and sensitive potential future crossing.
It, it, it's bigger and a little more difficult, yeah. We can't guarantee we're going to get that, but we're working with, I forget the guy's name, Environmental Resources, and he's pretty good at this stuff. And working with Whitehead. If we get approved and we get annexed in, then we'll, we will go and pursue that.
All right, again, thanks for the info.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
That's all for me.
Evelyn, you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Harry, for the revision. It looks very nice.
Thank you very much.
I just have one, you know, really one question. With all of the other proposed amenities, you used the word proposed. And when you referenced the school, you said potential. Is there some concerns about the school actually coming into fruition? Or is it a proposed school as well?
It's a proposed school site, and we believe, and Bill can speak to this further, but we believe there's an opportunity for either a private or charter school and a potential interest in that use as part of this project. So we have reserved a, a site which we believe would serve the community well for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Not hearing any. Sue and Jeanine, thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to the public hearing.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next item on the agenda, the planning report, Planning Department report. Janine?
All right, thank you, Chairman Gan. So for the, again, Janine Harrington, Director of Planning, for the record. For the Planning Department updates, we do have some upcoming projects for the Planning Commission. Town Homes at Potomac Square is a major subdivision that was annexed into the town in 2019. So they will be, or actually is before that. But they will be coming back to the Planning Commission in the near future for a major subdivision for their town home community off of Scroggen Street. We will also have Heritage Green Parcel A and Heritage Green Parcel O coming down the pipeline. Staff is currently reviewing Parcel O for their preliminary plot and going through our technical review team process. As you heard from the Hub, we also have public hearings coming up at the March 1st meeting for the Hub annexation for their zoning category of TDX. The Villages of Rosewick annexation with a zoning category, category of NCX. And the Hawthorne Yards annexation for the zoning category of NCX. So all of those have been in the works for quite a while. They've been to the town council for their work sessions. And each of those projects has been given the green light to proceed forward with the annexation process. And so the first step is going before the Planning Commission for the zoning category recommendation. So you will see those at the next meeting. Just as an overview of what the Planning Department has been up to in the month, the previous month, we, we have December here. We had two new designer review board applications, two exempt forest conservation plans, two major site plan submissions, one minor site plan submission, three stormwater management plan submissions, and one utility improvement plan submission. So we will have a few of those coming your way. For new business updates, just to keep everyone updated, I've given this information to the town council, but I thought it might be interesting for the Planning Commission as well. We have issued use and occupancy permits for a few tenant fit-outs in the area. So 205 Kent Avenue, La Plata Holdings for an athletic assembly, which is basically a small gym. 400 Dorchester Avenue, we did officially give the Dorchester Community Center their use and occupancy permit. But there's a lot of new and, and exciting things heading our way for that, that property. And I can't wait to, to bring that forward. 506 Charles Street, the Port Tobacco Players Theater did an interior renovation. And 515 Charles Street, we have Olivia Jane Cosmetics that have opened up business. For matters of information, I am making the final touches on a development guide that we will have our Public Information Office do the editing to make sure it's a professional-looking document. This development guide will be a start-to-finish how to do development in the town. This is annexations, master site development plans, subdivision site plans, all the way down to bond release and as-built approval. So it's a very comprehensive document, and that's why it's taking me quite a while to get it done, because I want to make sure that it's accurate and the best and greatest information. The Urban Tree Canopy Study, we have signed the final contracts. Everything's getting ready for that. And we're proposing a kickoff meeting sometime in the spring with the Alliance for Chesapeake Bay and the Davie Resource Group that will actually be performing the study. So more information will be coming down once we get closer to that kind of kickoff date. They will have researchers in the town looking at our trees, looking at the street trees, looking at their quality, how many we have, and kind of giving us recommendations for how we can update and upgrade our tree canopy, whether it's through street trees or through actual forest stands in the town. I'm currently working on a comprehensive goals tracking sheet. Thought that might be an interesting way to see how we're making progress. So the next time we go to update our comprehensive plan, we have a quick and easy tool to see what we've done and what we still need to do. I plan on incorporating this into, hopefully, when we get our website updated, having a whole page dedicated to this, where people can write in, post comments, questions, and, and see what we're doing, see where we're at, really make sure that that transparency is, is there. We're still moving forward with the Bike Way Path project. We're in the final designing stage, working with Heritage Green. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll see some progress on that in the future. For draft code revisions, I've got quite a few that I'm working on. I have finished the drafts for the health and sanitation to bring in kind of that environmental element, working with our Keep La Plata Beautiful Committee. We're going to try to come up with a process to alleviate some of the pressure on our code enforcement manager of inspections, Aaron Majri. Right now, he's kind of doing all of our code enforcement and inspections for the town by himself. And it's, it's a lot for one person to handle. And we have a whole green team, Keep La Plata Beautiful Committee, that are, you know, very interested in the environment and promoting beauty in the town. So I think that that's a, a good way to, to look at solving that issue and by promoting people planting native gardens, but also keeping it attractive and beautiful for the town. I've also started the subdivision chapter that will be coming to the Planning Commission for your review. I'm looking at Charles County, other municipalities of similar stature to get some ideas and research on how we can improve that and make sure that we have expiration dates, clear processes, which I think we are not up to speed on right now. I finished the Sign Code draft. Just waiting to get staff comments back before I edit that and take that back to, that will also come to the Planning Commission as part of Chapter 191. And we'll also take that to the Designer Review Board for a courtesy review. I've drafted an adequate public facilities ordinance relating to traffic and water and sewer road review. That is currently with the town attorney at the moment to, to do that review. But that will be coming to the Planning Commission under Chapter 191. And I'm looking at a form-based code for the downtown redevelopment district as a way to promote redevelopment in that area. It is not a, a big area that we're talking about, but it's the first step in looking at a flexible code and seeing how that goes to maybe expand that out for some of our commercial zones. And then after that, streets and sidewalks and waters and sewers are being looked at to make sure that our standards are in conformance with Charles County. As we progress in development, we're going to get to a point where we need to connect to Charles County roads, water and sewer systems. We want to make sure that we're compatible and that we've updated our, our chapters to make sure that we're looking at complete streets and making sure that they're functioning properly. And with that, you have any questions, Evelyn?
Janine, I was very glad to hear that you're putting together a comprehensive plan, goals tracking guide. I recall when we were going through that process, there were a lot of things to be done. So looking forward to seeing that progress. Any other questions or comments from commissioners for Janine? Not hearing any. Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, how about an update for the council?
Thank you, Chairman Gan. One of the things I was going to talk about was the Bike Path grant and the design, but Director Harrington addressed that. We had a very interesting presentation, and I just want to put it out there to the Planning Commission from David Morris, retired police chief, I think it was, from Riverdale. And pay attention to police reform. You know, make it, make an effort to go out and look for the different House bills and Senate bills that are impacting our police officers. You know, of course, they've been in the media a lot, and not for the right thing. And so every police officer is not a bad police officer. And, you know, when I interact with our local police, they are true community police officers, and they do a lot of good work for our communities. And I can't think that they're the only ones. So we want to make sure that we are protecting our police officers. So go out and look at the various House bills and Senate bills that are coming before legislation. We have to make sure that people don't use our police officers as a political pawn in their, you know, aspirations. And so that was one thing. David Morris, he, he did a very nice presentation to us. And then the other thing that came out, we, we did have a consultant to help provide oversight of our ARPA funding. You know that we have, I think, like $9.6 million in ARPA funding that we will be looking for ways to improve our community. And so we did have a, a hearing, not a hearing, but we did have an open forum for people to come in and make comment and ask questions, and no one showed up. So make sure you are letting your neighbors know what's happening in our town. This is your town, this is our town. Make sure people are involved and they use their voice to come in and ask questions and, you know, provide insight. If there's something they want to see, certainly make, you know, us aware of it. They know who, they, they should know who their council member is. So certainly address that. And then the other thing is, we did approve a fee schedule, a new fee schedule. Our town employees do a lot of extra work, and we, in, in the past, historically, have not charged for it. So we do have a new fee schedule that would kind of eliminate, offset some of the costs associated with the town staff having to provide extra services, you know, on the weekend and getting a lot of overtime doing that work, which we've never charged for. So those are the three things that I really, well, they were actually four, but the things that I wanted to bring to your attention. And, and also, I'm not sure if you've heard about the fact that we were trying to upgrade our water meters. We still have a large number of residents who have not made appointments to upgrade their water meters. So, you know, if you see your neighbors, you have contact with people in your community, make sure you ask if they've done that, and if not, ensure that they do. That is very necessary. So that's what I had for you.
I have a question, Evelyn. When you mentioned the fee schedule, has that been approved? And if so, when will it be effective? And how will it be advertised to all of our applicants?
So it has been approved. Janine, can you, okay?
Yep, it'll be effective on February 9th. So it was, it was adopted the same night as the Designer Review Board chapter. So those will become effective on February 9th. When those become effective, we do have a When those become effective, we do have a prepared statement to put out on our Facebook page. Both the town's planning, Facebook page and the planning department's Facebook page. It will be posted on the town's website. And I am also preparing an email to send out to applicants that we have building permits in with or, you know, anyone that has a, a special event permit that we can send out to notify them of the change as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to get a, a kind of consensus from the Planning Commission before I start looking into the, the parking requirements. Is everyone, can I get a consensus to look at that, review that and see what options we have to look at our parking?
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Yeah, John says yes.
Is this in lieu of the excessive waiver request?
Yes. So like I said, since we've been getting so many waiver requests and, you know, we were taught this in planning, that if you start to get a lot of requests for variances, for waivers, for non-conformity, then there's generally probably something that's not quite right with your code and you need to look at it. So I just wanted to make sure that I had a consensus before I, I went through that effort to bring that back to you.
Thank you for clarifying. I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Director. Janine, I'm not sure if you heard my yes, but definitely a yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else to be brought up by the commissioners to go to the meeting? Not hearing any. It is 7:12. I call this meeting to be adjourned. And I thank you all for your time and your participation. Have a good evening.
Yes, he did adjourn the meeting.
I didn't hear it.
Poor Mike. Yes, he did. He did adjourn.
All right. Good night.
Have a good night.
Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye.